Okay, good evening. Welcome to the Vermillion Local School District Board of Education Regular Meeting of Monday, November 5th, 2018. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Here.
Ms. Ennis.
Here.
Ms. Steph.
Here.
Ms. Russell.
Here.
Mr. Stark.
Here.
All members present?
First thing we'd like to do is call up all the children who are here for Citizen of the Month. Everyone here tonight is being recognized for being a great student and a great citizen. Alright, so we're in our line. What's your name?
Harper Stetts.
What grade are you in?
Second grade.
Who's your teacher?
Mrs. Bailey.
What do you want to be called?
A zookeeper.
Awesome. What's your name?
Jessie.
Jessie, what grade are you in?
Kindergarten.
And who's your teacher?
Mrs. Boom.
And who's your teacher?
I can eat salsa.
Good job. What's your name, buddy?
Ashton.
Ashton, what grade are you in?
Um, kindergarten.
Who's your teacher?
Ms. Barnaby.
What would you like to be called?
Um, Barnaby.
Awesome. Got your button on there. What's your name?
Razelyn.
Razelyn, what grade are you in?
Kindergarten.
Who's your teacher?
Ms. Caris.
And who's your teacher?
A doctor.
Very nice. What's your name?
Sabrina.
Sabrina, what grade are you in?
Third grade.
Who's your teacher?
Ms. Davidson.
And what would you like to be called?
From Elsa.
What's your name?
Franklin.
What grade are you in?
Third.
And who's your teacher?
Ms. Teal.
And who would you like to be called? Teacher, that's great. What's your name? Katie, what grade are you in?
Um, second grade.
Who's your teacher?
Ms. Hunsell.
And who would you like to be called?
Uh, Morris.
Morris, very nice. Okay, everybody could rise for the Puzzles of Los Angeles. Followed by a homeless silence. Okay, you guys start it up. Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic of our citizens, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just for all.
Okay, item five, the student liaison report.
Bonnie Myers is here tonight. She's actually going to introduce our student liaison partners tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. When Mrs. Russell asked me to come up with something to showcase the elementary school, first thing that jumped into my head was our adaptive PE program. It's not unique to the elementary school. It actually is in all three schools, but I think it's a really awesome program that we have and something that not, I think, everybody knows about or understands. So just, I wanted to introduce Stacy Smith and Kevin Hogan, who are running that program. And the one thing I just wanted to let everyone know is that this is just an awesome example of how teachers saw a need. They found out about it and then they presented the idea of starting an adaptive PE program in Vermillion. And then they went out and they lobbied for it and they did it. And it's an amazing thing for our students with disabilities. And I've known Stacy for a long time in our school and I know her passion and her compassion. And now I'm getting to know Kevin and he is very passionate about kids. He's very compassionate with students with disabilities. And to watch them in the gym with these kids who can be in a phys ed program that is adapted to their needs and see how happy they are and how successful they've been has been a real joy. So I'd like to introduce Stacy Smith and Kevin Hogan.
Thank you, Bonnie. That was very nice of you. We want to thank Crystal for, you know, asking Bonnie and then Bonnie asking us. We were kind of surprised, actually, because that's a huge compliment to us. I don't even know if people know that we have adaptive phys ed in our district. You know, people in IP meetings, you know, BBC would know that, but I didn't know that anyone else did. So that's why Bonnie asked us to come here. So we didn't really know what, you know, anyone wanted to know about adaptive phys ed. So we kind of thought we'd go through the what, why, where, when, how kind of thing. So I'll let Kevin start with, you know, what it is.
Adaptive PE, just like any other student with special needs, it's specially designed instructions specifically for physical education. In our district, we saw a need, Stacy Smith and I, we did some research, we had a workshop, we got certified in it. We talked to the higher powers. We got it okay that we could do it. And we offer a few different options within the buildings. We offer adaptive PE only. It looks different in the three buildings. We're not going to get into specifically exactly what it is. A flex option where they get, they come to what would be, I guess, like a resource room for physical education, adaptive physical education. Then they go off to the inclusive environment as well. And then they can be just in the inclusive environment. And we are used as a consultant for the general, general physical education teacher if one of us is not their teacher.
Kevin and I, we talked together, what was that, 10 years ago?
Oh, okay.
A long time ago at Saylor Way. And then, you know, we continued this passion for phys ed, you know, between the schools. And I remember, we were at that convention he's talking about and they were talking about this adapted phys ed. Well, we had always just adapted our programs to fit, you know, children with disabilities. We just would try to modify, but there was some times and some instances where even we felt like it wasn't the right environment for them, but what was our option? And so when we went to the convention and heard about that, we went through Kent State and we, like, right off the bat, we need this in Vermillion. And we came back and I talked to Bonnie, like, oh, yee-haw. And it didn't get, like, dummy dumb, but there's a lot that goes on to it. I mean, it's on the IP, it's legally binding. I mean, there's a lot of things that have to go into it. So we came, like, you know, yee-haw. That was last October. So we are one year into adaptive phys ed and, I mean, I feel like it's going well. The progress, like Bonnie said, when the kids feel successful at even the smallest little thing, it's just... Well, I could cry every day when I leave adaptive phys ed. I could shed a tear every day after adaptive phys ed, mostly because of joy and, you know, seeing them be able to succeed and that's, that's a great thing. I don't know if anyone has any more information.
How many students do you have in your programs?
Seventeen across the district right now.
What are some examples of things that you might do with them?
At the high school, how that happens.
It looks a little different in all three buildings. And it really depends on the actual individual students that are in the class, how you're going to run it. At the high school, we have, we only have three students in there right now. And we have a daily checklist and they check off as a complete, the activities that, that are scheduled for that day. And we have a daily routine, a warm-up routine. And then we try to incorporate some type of fitness-oriented activity along with their individual goal and an activity that the general physical education class is doing as well. Of course, everything is modified for the, the students in the class. At the middle school, it looks a little different. They have, it's similar to a checklist, but they have little Velcro, colored Velcro things that they put on for when they do something, when they complete an activity. And it's a little less structured because of the type of students we have. So they choose when they, they do their warm-up laps or their yoga poses. They don't necessarily go in a specific order like, like at the high school. And then the elementary school, I'll let Stacy talk about that.
The elementary school, I mean, the elementary school in general is all about figuring out a routine and phys ed. And I do a ton of stations. So like last October, we worked on walking into the gym to your spot. And instead of, like, in the general phys ed setting, you're number two, you're number four, and then we do a warm-up. They had, like, this had your picture on it, this is your spot, this is where you do your warm-up. And then in, in the elementary school, as Bonnie well knows, it's almost a one-on-one. We have a lot of parent professional help and it's necessary in the elementary school because everything is a little bit, you know, running a lot slower than how the middle school and the high school run. But that, I, that just brought up what we were talking about. A lot of people thought adaptive phys ed, you know, kids in wheelchairs, kids with the walkers, you know, kids that have different needs. But the reality is that we have a lot of children on, like, the autism spectrum and kids with, you know, emotional issues. Behavior isn't really a reason for adaptive phys ed. Well, behavior could be a red flag for, does someone need adaptive phys ed? And that's when Kevin and I do the whole testing and then take the observations from the phys ed teachers, the other two, or we have our own observations. And then you go kind of down a checklist of, is this child adapted, adapted phys ed or are they general phys ed, kind of what he was talking about? I don't know if that's, explains it.
Then you have input from parents, like, have they seen the difference or they mentioned it each night? This is really awesome that you're taking that time.
Well, I actually, we had to meet, we had to meet with all seventeen parents first. Then we had to meet with all seventeen parents through an IP meeting. And then we had to meet, you know, with the group. So it was, we had, I don't, I don't even know, maybe a hundred meetings last year. I mean, it was, it was a lot. But the parents were shocked that the two of us just started this in Vermillion. I mean, the utter, like, and Bonnie was in some of the meetings too, like, why, why do you want them, you know, like, why do you want them? Like, well, because, and then they're like, well, what does this do for you? You know, what is this? I said, it's not doing anything for me. I, I, we see a need, we want to help them and this is a better setting for them. I think the parents were thrilled, yes. I mean, I don't, no, a year into it, I guess, we haven't heard, you know, a lot, but no one's saying anything negative, so we'll just take that as positive.
I would think they would appreciate it, for sure.
In addition to the time that they spent with principals, meeting with principals, I know that they spent a lot of time with Mr. Balada. I think that you brought the idea to him as well. They're not mentioning the amount of time that was put in with him. So there's been a lot of planning and time spent on behalf of the students, but we appreciate it and thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
Do you identify students that could benefit this through, if they're have, they're in for other IP issues or how do you get, how do you get the students?
Well, the nice thing is, like, what do we have, 500 kids in the elementary school, right around? So I teach all 500.
Okay.
So that worked out really nice for me because as I was teaching and trying to modify and they weren't working. And then we sent emails to the middle school, you know, to Kurt and to the other teachers, CBC Room, you know, any red flags, any kids? And then Kevin teaches so many, Brandon teaches.
I teach probably half of the kids at the high school.
Okay.
And then I work closely with Brandon Gilworth, the other health and physical education teacher. I mean, literally, I work 15 feet away from our desks, are. So there's constant communication. So if he thought a student was displaying red flags, he would let me know and then we would go from there.
Yeah, so we have seventeen across the district, but we have assessed close to forty.
Okay.
So that's kind of where that is.
That's great.
Well, great, thanks, great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, item six of the legislative report, sir.
Okay, we have three different bills that have been introduced. None of them have passed, but they're just in the beginning stages. One is House Bill 734. It's regarding breakfast programs in the public schools. Didn't give me much more information than that, but I'm going to keep my eye on that. Senate Bill 329 was introduced to revise the definition of hazing. It's to increase the penalties for a hazing offense to a first-degree misdemeanor because they have seen a rise in hazing. And then Senate Bill 330 was introduced and that is to require public schools to include mental health into their curriculum. So I'm going to kind of just try to keep an eye on those and see if anything happens.
Okay.
What was the number of the last Senate bill?
Senate Bill 330.
330?
Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you. Item seven, is the reports, the superintendent's report first?
I'm going to start with an item that's not on here. If you just give me one minute on that. Back in March of last year, we held a forum right after the Parkland shootings. And we discussed student safety and our community at that time brought us the need to put a safety levy on the ballot. This will be coming up tomorrow. So it's a culmination of that activity, that thought, that process that we've been through now for the last several months. And so get out and vote tomorrow. It's, we had a committee that then, after that, and put together our thoughts on that. And that money that's going toward that safety levy can only be used for safety only. And so I just wanted to reiterate that this evening one last time to say that that is a dedication for three things, basically. One is for an additional SRO officer. The other one is for upgrades of cameras. And the, the last one is a mental health therapist. And that's why I asked you about the Senate bill, to see if there's going to be any language coming in on that. We knew that there'd be some changes. And we knew that we'd be on target to get an extra mental health therapist. So those are the three things that that money will be used for. It's twelve dollars approximately per month on a hundred thousand dollar valuation.
Two dollars.
Two dollars, I'm sorry. Twenty-four dollars per year. And so that's not a whole lot of money. And we're hoping that that's going to pass tomorrow. So just wanted to give that a final notice, final mention. Next, at our previous meeting, we talked about the school report card. And some, one of the areas that we're graded on, on that report card is our testing, our school testing for our ACT testing. And we, there's a lot of information that Mr. Balada presented that evening, but the counselors know a whole lot more. And so in that evening, we didn't really have a chance to get into too many details. So we've got our three counselors here tonight. Kara Habermill, Erin Smith, and our newest counselor, Jordan Farr. They're going to come up just for a few minutes tonight and give a few more details about that ACT testing process. So welcome and tell us a little bit more about what you know. Thank you.
Thank you very much for having us. I am Erin and as we'll say, I'm one of the counselors here. Our goal through our counseling department is to, is to present the students with a comprehensive, but not an appropriate, school counseling program with a holistic approach. So we're looking at the whole child. A piece of that is the ACT program component. And that begins really with rigorous class, with rigorous curriculum in our classes and also a curriculum building with the teaching staff. That includes test prep strategies, time management, anxiety reduction, things like that. As of 2017, that was the first year that Ohio required all students to take the ACT in spring of their junior year. Prior to that, the test was really a placement test for students that went to a four-year college. So for, for example, of, in terms of what we're testing now as opposed to what we're testing, in 2014, we had 99 students test the ACT. And as of 2018, we had 164 of our students test that year the ACT that were juniors.
Good evening. So my name's Jordan Farr. I'm the newest school counselor. So what we did, we could go on and on about all of the different things that we do in our comprehensive school counseling program. So we tried to put some things together specifically that we do with our students holistically that then helps with the ACT. So at the very beginning of the school year, open house, we held pair meetings for incoming eighth graders as well as our senior students. We also met with our students in eighth, ninth, and 12th grade. Soon we will be meeting with seventh and 11th graders. Then we also, at those points, we use Naviance, which is our career in college, writing this platform to do some interest inventories and see exactly where they are at with their career search with that, which then leads to their college planning process if they're going that route. We also talk about E-HOBE. We've taken two field trips to E-HOBE as well, so that way they can kind of pinpoint exactly what direction they're planning on going. In addition to that, we also meet with our students about our course planning, which then also determines, how do I want to say this? The ACT is designed for junior students who are on target as far as their graduation requirements. So we work with students one-on-one and in groups to schedule those courses that are appropriate, that are their next level up. Then, in the mid, and after we meet with them in large groups, we'll sit down with them one-on-one and really ask about their current career plans. Where are they thinking, you know, do they need to go to college? Are they looking at E-HOBE? Where are they at in that process? So we, we place them in the appropriate classes. And then there also is a Naviance test prep program that is done in English classes to help prepare our students for the ACT as well. And then Kara is going to talk about the other things that we have available to us, which we have put out to our students and will continue to as well.
Hi, I'm Kara Habermill, one of the other school counselors. So some of the things that we do with our students who are telling us that their next step is to go on to a traditional four-year school. We're very fortunate, we have Naviance. So that is a program that we'll go in, we'll introduce, use it for career and college searching. But then we also work with our English teachers very closely and they will start guiding the students through practice with the ACT. Open Ed and ACT Academy are also free resources for our students to go in and do timed practice tests. You can narrow it down by which subject areas and where you need to hone in your skills to attempt to improve your program. Khan Academy then also ties in because it has videos. So students can go through a specific skill that they're struggling with and it'll allow them to go in and actually see somebody go over that as well. I think one of the other things we really need to look at, the state is requiring all of our students to take the ACT test. So we know that that decreased not only Vermillion High School, but the state and the national average for the ACT. So when you go back, so I could gather all the evidence that we have. So every year, ACT sends us really nice ACT profile. I'll sit down and go over it with anybody that wants it at a later time. But they send it every year. So going back, I think when we moved and restructured, we lost a little bit of some of that and ACT was not readily able to get us that. But going back to 1994, our average at Vermillion High School was a 22 and we were testing about 99 students. Until this year, 2018, our average has been a 22. So this is the first year we were at a, I don't want to say this incorrectly, this year, we were at a 20.6. And for the state, it was a 20.8. And for the national average, it was a 20.8. So we're just a little bit below that level. But then you also have to realize, we're now testing every student. And we know not every student is planning to go on to a four-year school. We have a lot of students who are going to LC and they would take our entrance test to place them into classes. So they're not necessarily retesting and taking an ACT. So I just think it was really important for us to kind of let you know what we're doing at the high school and what has changed. And to know that, you know, we're working with all of the students, but sometimes it's, it's very difficult to move those ACT scores. It is not something that you can just drill and kill the test to improve that score. It is quite difficult to move that score. And we do have some students who are outstanding. And, and you can come down the hallway and see our, our academic board with all of our students who have scored over 30 on the ACT. So I guess that leaves, do you guys have any questions for us about anything?
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're, we're really fortunate that we have four, three at the high school, two at the middle school, and one counselor at the elementary school. So we've got six counselors overall. And as you can see at the high school level, how complex it is just for one facet of what they do. And we've got an outstanding counseling department and we appreciate the effort. And we know that those scores, I'm sure, will come up and you're working hard at. But we also know that we've got a more difficult, challenging student at times that have entered into our district. So that's been a challenge overall. Jim, when he did the report card presentation, you could see that we had some very good success in some areas, but we also need to work in others. So thanks for the extra information from the counseling department tonight. And as I said, we're really fortunate though to have this many counselors. Our student to counselor ratio is, I think, one of the lowest around because if you look at other surrounding districts, they're not as fortunate to have as many counselors as we do. And that's one of the areas that we've definitely made a concentration in our district to have. And we think that's important, not only from a mental health aspect, from an academic standpoint, and just so many others that they can, they can work on so many different facets. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Before we continue on, the gentleman that just came in, are you here for the student of the month?
Oh, yeah.
Are you?
Yeah.
All right, come on up. We did all the other kids in the big guy. Come here, pal. What's your name? Gavin? What grade are you in? Tenor grade? Oh, okay, that's good. Who's your teacher?
Mrs. Stocker.
All right. And what would you like to be when you grow up?
Astrid.
Astrid, that's awesome. Thanks for coming in today.
Good job.
Okay, I have one more item on my superintendent's report tonight, and that's to approve a one-year additional duty contract for Kurt Ennis, Vermillion High School Boys Basketball Assistant Coach.
I'll move.
One second.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Mr. Habermill?
Yes.
Ms. Ennis?
Ashton.
Ms. Steph?
Tess.
Motion approved for and one extension.
Before we move on, I just want to mention one quick thing. We committed to do a parent university. And this weekend, we had a parent university that we invited, basically, the youth and our community in for some resources, some education, and advocacy for a discussion around youth. And we're going to keep working at this. It wasn't really very well attended, honestly, but it was worth the effort. We had a lot of good speakers. We had a great agenda. And so we'll keep making that effort. I'll pass an agenda along to the board tonight. I'll just give it to you later. But we had a really nice agenda that lasted until 2:45 in the afternoon. And Karen Blackburn took the lead on that. And we did have a lot of great speakers. We'll just keep making the effort for the community and for all those topics that we think that are going to be relevant to the community, so.
Do you know when the next one is?
We haven't set the date at this time yet, but it'll probably be in a few months, at least a few more months. As soon as it gets close, we'll definitely make it, start to advertise it. So that's all I have for my report tonight.
Okay, item B, the treasurer's report.
Approved financial report for September 30th, 2018, that is attached with A and P.
I'll have it.
One second.
So going through the general fund revenue by month, through September, the district has received $9,608,012 in general fund revenue compared to $9.1 million in fiscal year 18 and $9.6 million in fiscal year 17. So again, we are on pace to collect the average general fund revenue. We typically do in years of... do in years past. Looking at food service revenue through September, the district has received $94,000 in food services fund compared to $100,000 in fiscal year 18 and again, $90,000 in fiscal year 17. So our revenue seems to be right on pace with where it has been in years past. When we look at all funds on the revenue side of things through September, we've received $10.1 million in all funds compared to $9.7 million in fiscal year 18 and $10.1 million in fiscal year 17. Again, just mirroring the revenue that we received in fiscal year 17. Looking at expenditures, for the general fund through the month of December, the district has expended $5.4 million in the general fund compared to $6 million in fiscal year 18 and $6 million again in fiscal year 17. So again, our revenue is on pace to where it's been in typical years past. Our expenditures are slightly lower than where they have been in years past.
Is that a result of efficiencies or timing?
A little bit both. A little bit both. Pretty actually, the majority of that is a large decrease in our health insurance. Looking at food service expenditures through the month of September, we've expended $98,000 in food service through the month of September this year compared to $182,000 in fiscal year 18 and $150,000 in fiscal year 17. And when we're looking at expenditures for all funds, we've expended $6 million from all funds at this time compared to $6.6 million in fiscal year 18 and $6.7 in fiscal year 17. So again, that reduction in expenditures is showing across not only just the general fund, but all funds in particular. And lastly, when we look at cash, general fund cash, through September, we have a total of $18.9 million in cash in the general fund compared to $17.1 in fiscal year 18 and $17.5 million in fiscal year 17. A little bit of this is misleading, Chris, kind of what you were, what you were alluding to. We received the entire homestead and rollback payments in the month of September, whereas in years past, it was drawn out through September, October, and November. So revenue isn't slightly, but it'll catch itself up here. Looking at food service cash, we have $294,000 in food and service cash compared to $186,000 last year and $159,000 in fiscal year 17. I will caution them more though that next month, we're going to see a pretty big decline in the cash. We had a ovens we needed to replace and also we needed to replace a chiller. All in all, it's going to be around $80,000 when we spend last year, I would say, this time. Lastly, as far as the financials go, looking at all cash, through September, the district had $22.2 million in cash from all funds compared to $20.7 million in fiscal year 18 and $20.9 million in fiscal year 17. And again, it's a slight increase from that homestead and rollback in the revenue side of things and also us declining a little bit in our expenditures over the years. It's offset that there. Any questions on the cash side of things?
Just a quick comment on cash outlay for the food services that you were talking about that's going to be rather sizable. Those are a replacement of original ovens when the school was built. So we're in need of convection ovens and we've not replaced them since this school's built, so we've done pretty well.
That's pretty good.
We'll see if we can get that, but not the best, but the next ones we get, right? Now looking at investments, this is just for this fiscal year, July, August, and September. July, we collected $25,000 in interest. August, $20,000 and in September, $26,000, $27,000 in interest payments. Largest change this year from last year is really the Huntington account. I want to say the first, we basically had a different account from July up until around March where we weren't collecting much at all as far as interest goes. We've made some changes with Huntington, worked with them to develop a hybrid account. And through that hybrid account, we're sort of different, but we basically earn 1% interest. However, you had to keep $2.5 million back in some hat, which we were able to do. And because of that, we were able to earn $2,000, $3,000, $5,000 actually from a month back over in interest in a month.
Any other questions? Call the roll.
Ms. Steph?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Mr. Haverman?
Yes.
Ms. Anis?
Yes.
Motion approved, five zero. Approved $100 donation to Sailor Support Fund and gift card donations by the DTA for PBIS program for Sailor Way.
I'll second.
Call the roll.
Mr. Haverman?
Yes.
Ms. Anis?
Yes.
Ms. Steph?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Steph?
Yeah.
Motion approved, five zero. Resolution to approve the VENINAV invoices for edgenuity, which is for $5,000. Pay Schools, which is for $6,528. And Mercy Share for $4,517.
I'll move.
A second.
So what this is, is anytime we have a VENINAV, which is basically we receive an invoice and we don't have a purchase order in place, it becomes a VENINAV. I need to sign it. It's basically saying that we, at the time the order was made, had the funds to pay the bill on time whenever we received it through statutory requirements, through Hyervase Code. I'm not able to sign off on any VENINAV. It's over $3,000. The order needs to be approved. And so what these were, just so you understand, first of all, edgenuity, what that was, we had a purchase order in place last year. We didn't receive the bill. We closed the purchase order when we closed out the fiscal year. We didn't reopen a purchase order for it and then we received the bill. So that was edgenuity. Pay Schools, similar situation. We didn't realize we'd be getting a bill for pay schools when we received it and we didn't have the purchase order in place typically. At least as far as last year, in the previous years, it happened after January. So when we close out the calendar year, typically we open up those POs anticipating these invoices. But we got it early and so we didn't have a purchase order in place for that one. And then lastly, the Mercy Share. Typically, our insurance consortium pays, this is for the biometrics, the blood testing we do. Normally Mercy is the one that pays for that through the Lake Erie Regional Council, government of health insurance here. We didn't know that they were going to make a change in bill us instead of just paying for it and taking it out of our bill. So again, we didn't have a purchase order in place there. But again, this, it's standard business. It's just procedural, but I'm not able to sign off on this.
Questions? Okay, call the roll.
Ms. Anis?
Yes.
Ms. Steph?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Mr. Haverman?
Yes.
Motion approved, five zero.
Okay, item C, items for discussion. The application for Ohio Enterprise status from Defense Soap LLC currently pending before the Vermillion City Council.
I'll move. I'll second.
This is just discussion.
I don't.
Who has information?
This is a letter that we received, the attachment from the mayor. And basically it's, we've had one of these quite some time ago. Basically just informs us that we've got a business that's coming into town. This business is going in right next to Germans and it's a soap company. And they're wanting to give a 10-year tax abatement to the company. And it will affect the amount of taxes that we do collect for the school district. But I think that the mayor, rightfully so, is looking at the greater good of the city and making sure that we're looking at economic development and trying to encourage businesses to come into town. So I think that the mayor and the city council are making a reasonable request and quite frankly, this, we wouldn't be blocking this. They're just doing this as a courtesy to let us know that they're doing it. And we always just then mention it as part of board business because it does impact our school district. So I think it's a good thing for the city and I think that's the position that the board has always taken too, is that we like to try to work with the mayor and the city council and our community and just encourage business development.
I'd like to use a discount on soap.
I hope so.
Okay, item D then is board business. Recommend a resolution to approve Ohio Enterprise Zone status for Defense Soap LLC for a period of 10 years.
I'll move. I'll second.
Okay, so that's what we just talked about. Are there any other questions? Okay, call the roll, please.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Mr. Haverman?
Yes.
Ms. Anis?
Yes.
Ms. Steph?
Yes.
Motion approved, five zero.
Item E, the consent agenda. The superintendent and the treasurer recommend that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda items. Action by the board in adoption of the consent agenda means that all items are adopted by one single motion unless a member of the board, the treasurer, or the superintendent requests that any such items be removed from the consent agenda and voted upon separately. Item one, the minutes of the October 8, 2018 board meeting. Item two, to adopt a resolution to approve interagency agreement between Vermillion Local School District and the Huron City School District, FBO Firelands Title I Services. Item three, adopt a resolution to approve the services of O'Toole, McGlaughlin, Dooley, Pacora attorneys and counselors. Item four, adopt revisions to the following district policies and accompanying guidelines as recommended by NEOLA for first read as listed on page. Item five, adopt resolutions to update the compliance officers to Lisa DeLees and James Williamson for policies 1623, 2260.01, and 4123. Item six, maternity leave of absence to the following, Laura Moyer, approximate dates March 11, 2019 to May 1, 2019. Item seven, one-year additional duty contracts to the following as listed on the page. Item eight, one-year limited supplemental contracts for the 2018-19 contract year to the following as listed on the page. Item nine, one-year limited contract for the position of student worker until the contract year ends June 30, 2019 to the following, Devon DeWitt and Frank Day. Item 10, one-year limited contract to the position of special projects for the 2018-19 contract year at $28 per hour as listed on the page. Okay, are there any items that need to be removed? Okay, then call the roll, please.
Mr. Haverman?
Yes.
Ms. Anis?
Yes.
Ms. Steph?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Motion approved, five zero.
Item eight was reserved for items that were removed from the consent agenda. None were, so we can move on from that. Item nine is public participation. This opportunity for anyone in the audience that would like to speak to step up to the microphone. All right. I think everybody in the audience has already spoken, almost. Item 10 is dating location of upcoming board meetings located at Vermillion High School, 1250 Sanford Street, Vermillion, unless noted. We have a regular meeting on Monday, December 10th, an organizational meeting on Monday, January 14th at 6:45, a regular meeting on Monday, January 14th at 7:00 p.m., a regular meeting on February 11th at 7:00 p.m. And then with that, item 11, we will recommend a resolution to move into executive session for the purpose of employment or compensation of public employees.
I'll move.
A second. Call the roll, please.
Ms. Steph?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Mr. Haverman?
Yes.
Ms. Anis?
Yes.